I'd like to welcome everyone to the April twelfth, two thousand and ten meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business is the acceptance with or without corrections to the April fifth minutes which were condensed. So, no offense to you Catherine, it was just shorter.
Seconded, and I do have a correction.
Okay, there's a correction by Selectman Pierce of page.
Page eight. The second line of text which reads, "He wants to post," I would suggest the word "post" should be "request." If he wants to request a sign on his road, not property, so change "property" to "road," change "post" to "request." Does the homeowner can?
Yes.
He can request a sign, it's not on his property but on the road.
Gotcha, anything else? I had on page six, and I don't know if it's possible to go back, there was two motions, we took two votes, and I voted no on both of them, and I'm kinda curious as to maybe why, if I did, I can see maybe why, second one, but on that last one, this is the Chairman Gross moves, Selectman Pierce seconded to proceed with the basic project. If I did, I don't think I made that motion, but if you can check into that.
Yeah, I did, I looked at the video, because it didn't look right that you voted against and then made the motion, but I think there was such a delay in getting a-
Oh, getting a second?
Yeah.
We're starting, getting the process going, okay, for discussion.
Oh, I remember that, yes, and I think you said, "Okay, I'll move it."
Oh, just so that we can get it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes with-
There's only one change, right?
One change.
Okay.
With correct, with the one correction, say aye.
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 And just for the record, we did get an email from Wayne Peralta about how he does want to proceed with it on his street, but if we can just some communicate with him with regard to filling out the right paperwork.
Thank you.
All right. Announcements, we have, congratulations are in order. Our IT technician Brian Ray announces the arrival of Colby Jamison Ray, born on March thirtieth, two thousand and ten. Colby weighed six pounds, three ounces, nineteen and a half inches long, and both baby and mom are doing great, and we have a picture. Newest addition. All right, is there anyone from the public? I'm sorry, you have an announcement?
Yeah, I wanted to, under announcements, I just wanted to make announcements to the board that on last week during the discussion on the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on dead ends, that I misspoke, that the urban compact was thirty, not twenty-five, just so the board's aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Also have a public service announcement for you. This is brought to you by the town clerk's office. It's a reminder to register your dogs. We have record of your dog being previously licensed. New Hampshire RSA four sixty-six colon one states that every owner or keeper of a dog, four months old or older, shall annually honor before April thirtieth license the dog for one year in the city or town in which the owner resides. And just wanted, again, Kathy Baller, town clerk, wanted to remind everyone who has a dog to make sure that they renew their license. So Steve, you might wanna renew your dog licenses. Anyone else have dogs? Make sure you're in compliance.
Thank you for that public announcement.
All right. And this is the public service announcement.
We've had a great response, Kathy wanted to add to that.
All right, that's the form. All right, we're gonna jump a little bit ahead here. We have Guy Karen, who has submitted a proposal to the board with regard to the Glen Lake waterfront project. And a draft proposal was provided to the Selectmen. And Guy, I'm sure most of us have read it, but if you wanna just try to hit on some of the highlights.
Yeah, thank you. First, I wanna thank the board for giving me an opportunity to pick up some of your time with this. I know Sue's provided a copy of this to all of you. I'm just gonna run through, just basically summarize, first of all, what it is and why I did this. There are, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of some of the issues, and I'm not sure that you're all aware of some of the things that go on at the public beach, and being not only a resident of Elm Street, but living on the lake, I have the opportunity and to witness many things. And I know Sue's aware of some of the issues that have happened there. Not the least of which is the condition that a lot of visitors leave that waterfront. And this is not just specific to weekends, but that, it happens on a semi-regular basis. If you've noted some of the pictures, I think page four and five of the proposal pretty much summarizes daily occurrences at that beach during the course of the summer. And even recently, during the warm temperatures, that place was packed again. And the reason I started to put this together is that the waterfront is an area that is supported by the taxpayers. But according to not only my wife and I's observations, and we walk that area quite a bit, we walk towards the dam, and on the way back, we always make a point of counting transfer station stickers. On average, we're looking at maybe one out of nine is the ratio of vehicles with transfer station stickers versus those that don't have them. The presumption, of course, is that they're non-residents. I've spoken to a number of police officers in Goffstown, and they all seem to be in agreement that to that, I've heard some guys say that over ninety percent of the cars there are not residents, and others have said the vast majority. The point being is that we're paying for a resource that our residents were intended to be able to use, and yet, we've had residents knock on our door and ask to park in our driveway because the parking spaces are completely taken up. There are instances, and I think Scott, last year I think you made mention during a meeting about someone who's got a motor home, who brings, and I think he's got a handicap sticker on it, or handicap plate. He brings the motor home there and takes up the two handicap spots at the very end of the south side of Elm and trailers a pontoon boat, which takes another two, sometimes three parking spaces, okay? So basically, I'm looking to address two problem areas. One is the cleanliness and the violations of the ordinances that currently exist on alcohol and glass. And the other one is to facilitate or promote ease of use for the residents, okay? So I had given this thought to paid parking for non-residents, okay? And I looked into quite a bit of different options on self-ticketing or self-service parking options, okay? Now, I haven't, as you probably noted, there's a lot more detail and there's a lot more study to be done, or research to be done on the options for these types of things. I've seen some, looking around, that run eight, ten, twelve thousand dollars for a single self-serving, self-service kiosk. And others, I've seen options that the city of San Diego uses, they're about five hundred bucks. And what those do is that the city will have a lot, would say forty parking spaces, and they're all numbered. And there's nothing but a big steel box on a pole with forty numbered slots, and you fold your dollar bills in and you slide them in, okay? I'm sure you've seen those. Down in DC where I work, at Defense Information Systems Agency, they use self-ticketing kiosks that's about the size of a payphone. It's cash only, it is exact change, it's fifteen dollars a day, and you walk up and you stick your fifty, and you better have correct change because on a number of occasions, I've had to slide a twenty in there and lose that five. It will present a ticket that shows the date and time of the purchase and the expiration date and time, which is, in their case, whatever number of days you've paid for. We wouldn't even need that option because I doubt anyone would buy a parking ticket or a parking space for more than a day. So I'm looking at what kind of revenue we might generate to help offset the costs of the cleanup that we have to do and the enforcement of this. And I, it's tough to come up with a length of time on say, on a return on investment because you don't know how it's gonna affect the non-residents who come there now. I would, I would hope that you might eliminate some of the undesirable element that's there. You might open up more spaces for the residents, and once you, you pay the initial investment off, it would be some kind of a revenue stream for the town. You know, on best case scenario, as I mentioned in here, you've got forty-five spaces that could theoretically generate at least four hundred fifty dollars in a single day. And once a space is vacated, somebody else can come right back in, and they're gonna pay the same amount. And then, this is just one of many, many suggestions I came up with. I'm just looking to try to, to enhance this resource that the taxpayers have. And actually, you know, promote a little tourism in Goffstown as well. So that was the reason for the proposal that I put together for your consideration. I thought maybe earlier, you know, would be better, now that we're looking at the boating and the swimming season coming up.
I, very well written, I think you clearly articulated a lot of the issues that have been going on for the last several years.
Thank you.
With regard to, you know, just a whole host of issues, the parking, the debris. There's a lot of, you know, I travel that road all the time, and you see it, and I think you're right. I think it almost in some respects, many residents are almost skittish to go there. One of the, one of the, you know, I do like the, the self-serving kiosk. I think one thing that we have to all be clear on is that, and Phil will correct me in the history of this, but this was, this has to be open access to the public. I'm not positive whether it has to be open access to the Goffstown public or the public public, but I remember, you know, when the whole kindergarten-
The grand-
Right, it was, it was, had to be for the public. Neither here nor there, I think we have to try to do something with regard to maybe recouping some of our costs. One of the ideas that I had in the short term, to save money for a kiosk, and maybe it would have some economic development relationship, if we could somehow sell a parking pass and collaborate with Sully's Grassmere General Store, you know, the Ace Hardware, where they have pre-printed passes, where they just put the date on it. Maybe they get a cut of whatever that is to service it. So if I wanna, there'll be parking passes purchased, and you list them right there. So people know that if they wanna park there, and again, these are all businesses that are open pretty much seven days a week, you know, morning, evening, all three of those establishments. Where you'd go in, you would get, maybe it's like, it'd be a hanger that you would put on your rearview mirror. And the clerk at the time would be able to sell it, date it, and then that person would put it on their rear, on their rearview mirror, where officers could quickly drive by. And if they do not have that on there, then they clearly know that there's, that there's an issue. And that would be a low-cost alternative, so you saved enough money to maybe do a, and then the other, the nice thing about it is the businesses may want to do this, simply because people who go there may want snacks and beverages or maybe they're going fishing and they wanna get some fishing supplies at the hardware store. So it could be a win-win, so the businesses may wanna do it, simply because it'll bring people into their stores. We then have a way of, you know, monitoring who's, who's using it, and that was just my low cost.
You're suggesting this for non-residents.
For non-residents, and I agree with you on the, if you have a transfer station sticker, then you're a resident. I mean, you're, you're good to go.
How do you prove that inside a store?
Excuse me?
How would you prove that?
You have to show your driver's license.
I, I think the auditor would have some control issues for a collection of municipal monies by a non-municipal entity. But I, I'd be willing to check into that.
Well, the other, the other thing that you're doing is, what you could do is you could sell, let's just say a store is doing it, and I'm just using a hypothetical, because ten dollars is just an easy number to play with, is that I would, the way that you would audit it would simply be, we are selling ten of these things for X amount of dollars to this particular store. They then in turn can sell it for that amount or greater, and that's clean. And then when they run out, they come back to us, or we deliver more, and that's how, you know, you do it, but-
There's a lot of different options, a lot of ways.
I just, I just, I just think that we need to do something here. It is a really nice resource in our community, but it just looks like, doesn't look good during the summer time, you know?
One thing that I, I mentioned in here that I didn't mention just now is, and whether anything is done at the beach or not, I would suggest this or recommend it to the board, that you look at lowering the speed limit a bit, perhaps between the western end of Big James Lane and Upton Lane, because there are a lot of kids running back and forth, and that boat launch is, does have a blind spot. When people are headed west on Elm Street now and come around that corner, I've been there pulling my boat out, and there's not a lot of room for the drivers that are exceeding that speed limit nearly constantly. It gets a little hairy at times, I've seen some close calls. So if we were to enhance the public beach area by expanding parking to include the kindergarten area and, you know, promote paid parking for non-residents, that might be something you might wanna consider as well.
Yeah, some of this is connected with, obviously, we don't have any control over the school district's facility. We'd have to, we would have to approach them about allowing Glen Lake for public use. There was also a concern years ago, I remember when Chief French was, was the police chief, about the safety of people crossing, you know, the street. I, I've always thought of that as a double-edged sword, I mean, is it better for people? I mean, it's safe, there's safety issues no matter what, but if you had it clearly marked as a crosswalk and, the other thing too is if during summer hours, you had those, you know, the schools, they have, you know, during school when it's flashing, fine, maybe that's when the speed limit is twenty miles an hour or something, but in the wintertime, when no one's putting a boat, a boat in there, maybe you don't need to have it at twenty.
Back when this was designed by the Conservation Commission, this new parking area, a lot of discussion went on why they chose that number of parking spaces. And the reason they chose a limited amount was because of the limited shorefront available, and they didn't want overcrowding at the beach area. So that's why, the thought was put into the number of parking places there.
Yeah. One of the issues though, that, that comes up, you could have two or three cars pull up, use those parking spaces, take the bikes off their roof, and then they're gone for the day. Or two cars will pull up with kayaks, they'll get in the water and leave. So they're really not using the beach area, but their vehicles are taking parking spaces.
What Nick is saying about the bikers is very prevalent. Early in the morning, on weekend, on weekends, you'll get four, five, eight, ten cars there, and they all unload their bicycles, put on their electronic suits, and they're gone for the day. They're gone. And rarely do we ever see any of those cars with a transfer station sticker on it, so we presume it's a non-resident.
Why don't Steve first and Nick?
I can go ahead, Nick, I think he was going, you're going.
Yeah, if I could just, if we could start by gathering information with this, is it possible to have the police department, over a period of time, maybe a week, two weeks, actually take trips to Glen Lake, run some of the plates to see if they're residents or non-residents, and kinda get a count, so that we can start off with a true basis of where the issue is? I mean, if it ends up being mostly residents, which I doubt it, but if it does, then this is, this isn't really gonna help us. But to just kinda get some real quantitative numbers on what that ratio is.
Well, I agree with Mr. Karen. The lakes, we're fortunate to have two lakes, I think they're great resources. I don't think there's anyone who doesn't go by Glen Lake and look at and say, "What a shame." I mean, if you're from a town in.
From the water as well.
Yeah, I, I, and it's long overdue and due. The second thing, can I get some clarification regarding the grant that stipulates that we have to, it's not just town, but we have to open it up to everyone else?
It wasn't, it was-
I'd like some real, I don't know, I mean, what grant it was, can I finish please? What grant it was, how, was there, was there, was there, was there a timeframe, or was it for perpetuity? I mean, do we, do we have that information?
We do.
Okay.
Part of the deed, the deed said that it had to be for youth, for public use. So, again, I'll go back in time. Arguably, that same land was also part of where the kindergarten resides now, and it's only Goffstown residents who are using the kindergarten. You could argue that it's the public, it's open to the public, but it's the Goffstown public. I think we'd have to do a little bit of research. If it wanted to be restricted to just Goffstown residents, we would have to, to look into that. I don't, I don't think that's a stretch, that's just my opinion.
I don't think it's a stretch either, if we could, if we could get a clarification on that.
My understanding is because it was federal monies through HUD, that it had to be open to the general public, and people before us researched it, and we can research it again, but found out that it had to, it couldn't be restricted to just residents. That was the first course of action. We've owned this since nineteen seventy-seven, it was approved at the nineteen seventy-seven town meeting. I think the appropriation was thirty-five thousand dollars, and we purchased it from the New Hampshire Water Resource Board for thirty-one thousand. But the stipulation was if it wasn't, if that parcel was not gonna be used for the public good, that it would be, resort back to the state.
Right, and the other thing that's a little, that I think we have to be just a little bit concerned with is that public waterways are owned by all citizens, that's one. And when you go to places like Lake Massabeek, or even Livingston Park, Doris Pond, you know what, I'm a Goffstown resident, I can't tell you how many times I've walked around Livingston Park and gone around Doris Pond, and I'm glad that I have an opportunity, even though I'm not a Manchester resident, to do that. So I think Guy's approach is a good one, saying, "You know what, we know that out of, out of town residents are using it, but we just wanna make sure that we can kinda cover our costs in terms of the cleanup and the monitoring of it, et cetera, so that the end result is that it's a beautiful place where everyone can enjoy and not, that it's just not, you know, it doesn't fall into disrepair or that people don't wanna go there because they, you know, there's an undesirable situation, so.
You know, I was reading the file on this after I received your proposal, Guy, and going back to nineteen seventy-seven, boards have been dealing with these same issues in different ways, through ordinances and ordinance rewrites.
Absolutely, up here and up at the, up at the pond.
Yeah, and even at the state legislature, there was a, a bill introduced way back when to reduce the motor boats to ten miles an hour because the big speedboats were coming in and there was an infiltration of these on the lake. So there have been many attempts to regulate, whether it's the speed of boats or alcoholic beverages, and, and they've tried to do it through the ordinances, but it's all about enforcement. And do you have the resources to keep someone down there and monitor regularly to?
Well, that's, that's I think why we, if we can get a true count, then we could run some hypothetical numbers and see, and you know, maybe it would pay, or this kiosk type system could pay for a seasonal person who would be positioned right there to do the cleanup and to enforce the parking and do all of those things. And that, I think, would lend some reassurance to residents when they go there, because there'd be a town employee. But I think it all starts with determining what the size of the problem is.
All right, any other comments, questions?
One last thing, a resident down the road from me asked me to bring up is that if the board does in fact end up addressing the issues there, another perspective for his was that in promoting economic development and tourism, that the board would rename Elm Street the Lake Shore Drive. Message delivered. I'm off the hook. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other questions before Guy leaves?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Just, I do have a question, I mean, regarding, when we have these, let's say, in this case Guy comes, we speak about the lake, we throw some thoughts out there. How does it proceed from here, how do we look at it, when do we bring it back on the agenda? I mean, I hate it when we have these conversations and then it's a month down the road or two months down the road.
Well, a lot of times it takes a month down the road to kinda go through its proper channels. But I think Selectman Campasano said, if we're gonna go and do some of these things, I think you have to kinda go through the process and do your investigation. So we have, Mr. Karen came in with his anecdotal evidence to support the notion that the vast majority of cars there are out of town and they're causing some issues, et cetera. That in and of itself is, in my opinion, may not necessarily be the issue. I think the issue is how do we better enforce it, how do we keep this place clean and orderly, et cetera? And if that means that we're gonna allocate more resources there, would revenues in another fashion kinda pay for it? So, getting back to what you're saying, if this board wants to proceed, then I think we have to then go with what evidence do we need to gather? And that could take a month, and then based upon that evidence, then do we wanna, you know, look at redoing an ordinance? So I'm gonna go with Phil first and then-
Well, there, there's a couple of things. First of all, I don't think that this issue is unique to Glen Lake. We also have Mountain Base Pond. We also have the town parcel that's on East Union Street, that's used by many, many people. They go in there, they go kayaking, they come. We also have the area by the power lines where people go in there, different areas that, where people access. Then we also have the issue of, is there access on Nemaski Lake, okay? And I guess I would just caution everybody that I don't think that we can take one particular entry point. Take that point and at the, or try to address non-residents because what we also have is a rail trail in town that's being developed, and we're gonna have the same kind of an issue. We're gonna have non-residents coming into Goffstown, parking at the trailheads to access this trail, and they're gonna be non-residents. Are we gonna treat all non-residents to Goffstown the same way? And I guess one of the other things that I find that I have a little difficulty comprehending how this is supposed to help economic development, if we're trying to attract people from outside of the town so they can come here and spend their money, but yet we're gonna charge them a high parking rate because they're non-residents. So I guess those are some of the issues that we have to kinda like look at and work out. This is not the only spot where non-residents are gonna park.
I'm not disagreeing with you. Good point.
Is that a ditto?
Yes, thank you for your comments.
I understand what, I understand what you're saying, but sometimes we do, I don't wanna fall into the situation that sometimes we take a specific spot, and I think we can all agree that Glen Lake is a, is a situation that it's out there, you can see it, it's noticeable. And if we take that, if we take it, all of a sudden we get into a situation where, where we wanna apply it to a rail trail here, 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 then it becomes such a big thing, we don't really get our arms around it, and nothing happens. In other words, I'm not saying it's not, not maybe the way to go or not, but I don't wanna see it just stall because then all of a sudden, we, we take a, a, a situation where it's, where it's one spot, but then we try to apply it to everything else, and we don't get anywhere.
And I think these are all good points, don't, don't get me wrong, I, I, and we will have to have a-
Can I just follow up to that specific, this is specifically with this type of an issue?
Sure.
You know, when we had the discussion about Milfoyle and Nemaski Lake, and I brought up the point that there was no place for Goffstown residents to enter. There was no public access to Nemaski Lake in Goffstown for Goffstown residents. I was told that they go to, should go to Electric Street. Well, are we gonna have the same issue now when Goffstown residents go over to Electric Street to enter Nemaski Lake? That Manchester does the same thing and says, "Non-residents, they're gonna treat non-residents in Manchester the same way we treat non-Manchester, non-residents in Goffstown." And I guess the only thing that we'd be starting to do then, is starting to have a war between communities of non-residents. Now, you know, all the towns have, almost all towns have a public beach in New Hampshire. And up until probably twenty years ago or so, they always had restrictions. Resident, it was a residence, resident beach, okay? I used to go fishing down, around Hollis, and that's what it was. I used to have to park down the road and down the street when I put my boat in. The legislature, I don't know if it's a legislature, but that's all gone. There's only one town that I know of in New Hampshire that has residents only, and that's in Tamworth. It's the only one that allows, is restricted to residents only. But all these other towns, Amherst used to have it, they all used to have it, they're all open to residents. The non-residents, rather.
General public.
Yeah, to the general public.
For record, I'll give you another good example of what you're saying. You can go to Guilford on Winnepesaukee, one of the nicest sections of beach is Guilford Town Residence. I'll give you another situation where if you go up to Horace Lake, one of the nicer beaches in our, in our local communities, you pay a fee to go to Horace Lake, and it's nice, it's clean, it's kept up. I don't, and I don't have a problem with- I don't, and I don't have a problem with this. I understand what you're trying to say and you don't want to pitch communities. But I can tell you when I would go to Horace Lake and I, you know, it, it's clean. It's nice. I don't think, I don't see myself going to Glen Lake at that beach. I don't see myself staying there, not because I don't like the water, not because I, I'm, I'm, and I'm very partial to my town, like to use it, but I would, I don't look at it as a clean area. I don't think many people do look at it as a clean area.
Maybe then we have to look at the issue of the upkeep of that area across the board. And, and in order to fund additional personnel, seasonal people to take care of that, maybe we need to have a parking fee across the board. Resident or non-resident. Non-residents can bike in, resi, excuse me, residents can walk in. But, but maybe we need to look at what's the cost of hiring additional people? And the impact on a tax rate or almost like a user's fee where you're paying for parking? The, um, and then it's fair, you're not.
Right. I, I happen to agree with you. I though, i- if you look at a lot of, um, situations, economic development. I go to Manchester, I pay to park. I go to the Verizon Center, I pay ten bucks to park.
Everybody pays.
Okay, everybody pays. And that's kind of where Selectman Campasano is going. Um, I work in Bedford. If Bedford residents pay a certain fee if their child goes to a day camp, if you're a non-resident of Bedford, you pay more. So there are, there's, there's ways of doing it. And I think it has to do with, as Selectman Campasano said, i- if the issue is upkeep uh, of the area, which I think that's what the primary issue is, and there's a cost to that, then how do we kind of, either it goes into uh, impact folk, people's taxes, or there's a user fee, or there were something, you know, of that. But I understand completely where you're coming from in the sense that.
Oh, don't, don't misunderstand me. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, these are all issues that need to be addressed.
Right.
I just have a concern of picking out one area and treating that uniquely.
Right. And sometimes though, if we, if we pick the most visible area and we try something, we experiment with it, with it, um, rather than knowing full well that, you know, this is a, a test pilot and see how is it gonna work here? Then it may work in other, in other places. I, I don't think that we want to discourage people from coming to Goffstown. Um, but by the same token, we have to try to wrestle with, how do we keep this area clean and safe and, um, and knowing that there's a, a cost to it? And I'll leave it with you, David, to wrap it up.
Thank you. Um, if we do pursue doing a, a vehicle survey, as suggested by Selectman Campasano, it's a good idea. I would suggest it has to be during the, the whole summer, not like you mentioned, you know, wrap it up in a month. It, you know, this is a year to look at it and continually to keep our eye on it and see what, try to document what the situation is. And then when things have calmed down next fall, start making decisions. Um, secondly, um, I did ask DPW and the park department heads, uh, what they do jointly concerning the trash. There is a, a schedule for DPW to pick up the containers once a week. Um, if they do see the containers overflowing, they'll, trucks are always passing by there because they're coming from different quadrants of the town, uh, to pick up another load. And the park department, uh, does send personnel out to pick up the grounds. So I just want to point that out that there is some cooperation already occurring there. And, but it's, you know, it takes away from their scheduled time. It's, you know, it's part of their duties to do that, but it does take man hours.
All right. Um, I think it's a, a point well taken that, uh, to embark on something like that right now in, in, uh, in April is probably not the wisest thing to do because I don't think we're gonna get the full brunt of, of the folks that are there. However, I'm not so sure respectfully that I agree with the whole summer approach. I, I think that, you know, certainly if you pick a month, whether it be June or July, I think you could, I think you're gonna get your traffic on that in that area in one of those months. And I think we could probably do a, um, you know, s, you know, again, a tally of, of how many folks, just by taking the quiz out, who's there, who's not there. I don't think we need to, I don't think it needs to be a whole summer, but that's just my opinion. Yeah.
And if we were to do this, would that change? I think, I think historically we can look back, I think most people can look at, look at the beach there and say, it's not, it's not, you know, it needs maintenance, it's not clean. And B, wherever we find these plates come from, will that make a difference in how, i- it won't change how, what's being cleaned within that park?
Yes, Nick.
I, I think.
Do you follow what I'm trying to say?
Right. I think ultimately, we're gonna have to come up with some plan to maintain the beaches and eventually, I mean, our whole economic development or a portion of it is tourism, is getting people to use the rail trails, getting people to use all of our waterway. So it's an issue that we're gonna have to address. But right now with, I think what those numbers will do is tell us what route to take. If, if the numbers are run and it would support, let's assume the board decided to do parking, a parking fee, a kiosk, we could run the numbers to see what a payback period is on a piece of machine. Or would it support the hiring of a seasonal person to do something like that? So I think the numbers gives us a baseline as to what feasibly we can do.
If I could though, I think the, Phil's, uh, comment, I think, was a good one in the sense that he talked about, are we gonna create a system whereby we uh, treat an out-of-town resident differently than we treat an in-town resident with respect to charging them? Because if, if this board is not going to go that route, if we're gonna just charge a flat fee no matter whether you're a resident or not, then going and figuring out who parks there is really, I think it's a moot issue.
We could do both. You can just resident, non-resident, add the two together and you get total number of vehicles.
No, I, I understand that.
So that those numbers will.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm just not articulating it properly. Tracking a non-resident versus a resident only would, would support the notion that if we were to charge non-residents, what would it generate in terms of income? Or no?
No. I would imagine if the PD came back and said, today there were ten vehicles parked there, eight were resident, eight were non-residents and two were residents.
Right.
If this board decided to go the avenue of just charging non-residents, we have that number. If this board decided to go with charging everyone, we have that number. A, a count at the beach is gonna give us both numbers. Residents, non-residents, and total number per day. So we could then decide what is the usage, what's the revenue that would be generated, whether we go with just non-residents only or all residents, and then determine the.
All right.
The evidence.
Is there a consensus of the board to proceed with having the, uh, police department, uh, conduct a study? And if so, um, what month or months do you prefer? Let's start with the first one. Um, does the board, um, favor a summer-long study? Is that a yay or a nay? Just give me a, who, who's in favor of, of a summer-long study of this?
This is a study to do what?
To determine resident, non-resident, uh, cleanliness, the, the whole shebang?
I, I guess before I decide as to whether or not to have the police department expend its resources over this, over a period of time to conduct the survey, I guess the question that I have is if we are looking to expand economic development and with non-residents, what's the effect that this would have on attracting non-residents for economic development? I mean, it seems to me that if you want to promote these items, these, these resources for economic development, and then you're going to put slap a fee on non-residents that you want to attract here, I just seems to me, to me, it seems like an oxymoron.
Can I address that? Uh, I think the question is gonna be asked to keep that beach, I mean, economic development in my understanding is increasing the revenue to the town. Ultimately, increasing people coming to the town to visit businesses. If the beach is dirty and people don't come, we defeat the economic development portion. If we need to hire someone to maintain that beach through tax dollars, we defeat the purpose of economic development. Because in order to get people to come, we now have to spend more money to keep it attractive. But I think before we can enter into any of these discussions, we need to have an idea of what our options are. And by that, we need information. That, that's one of the things this board is always trying to get before we make decisions, is information. How, how mu, how?
Right. I think what the balance here, I, I, as I see it is how much time do we want to expend having our police department jot down license plate numbers and having somebody determine that and, and how often, what's the frequency of it? Um, because in, in my, in, in, again, my humble opinion, I would, I would pick seven days of a particular month, a few weekends, a few days during the week. Um, obviously where, where they're sunny. Um, and, uh, to simply track it that way, a snapshot.
And I was gonna say, we, we could say the whole summer. It could be a very rainy summer. And next year it could be a very hot summer and the numbers are completely different. But I think going by taking random snapshots of weeks, weekends.
I would, uh, I would support that. Pick seven or ten days during June, July, maybe August. You know, in the early, and use that as your statistical sample.
Yeah. I don't see us taking action on this for this, create, solving this problem this summer. I, I just don't. I think we have to do data collection, but, um.
Could it be a, a task that the park department could do, just to tabulate license plates and?
Correct. I think that's something that could, that they, I think any, any, any town employee could actually jot down the, the license plate numbers and then route them over to the police department to, to, to run the plates and just to compile it. I mean, that's not, um.
There's a lot of flexibility on that as to who does it. Could be summertime student hire.
Maybe, we might want to check with PD though, there may be some.
Right. I was gonna suggest.
On how numbers can be run.
Because that might not be a legitimate reason to run plate numbers.
I'm not comfortable waiting a whole other year with things such as this. I think this one's pretty obvious to, in my mind. It's been like this for years. It's not, this is nothing new. I understand what you're saying about getting information. And I agree with that, but there's just sometimes, you know, that we're here one more year. I, for those people who live in those areas, for those people who want to use the beach, one more year is just, it, I, I, it, it doesn't speak of action. And I sometimes wonder when we have small, I mean, it, it is not a big situation from my personal opinion regarding the whole scope of what we do within our town. And sometimes when I look at us and I say it's a board, it takes us a year to create action, it's, it, I, I, it kind of surprises me. I'd like to think that we could find something that we move a little quicker with this. I'm not saying move in haste. I'm just saying, you know, some along studies and we'll get back to you next year for a situation that we know does exist. I, I mean, how many times do you go past there and the trash barrels are overflowing? There are, I mean, there are parking problems there. There are traffic congestion there. This is, this is nothing new. I don't know if waiting another year is gonna bring us any, you know, that, that all it's gonna do is bring us one more year down the road.
Well, if I could just respond, an ordinance requires public hearings. And also don't forget that if there are twenty-five people who do not like the ordinance, it goes on the ballot the following year. So as much as we want to go and, and I, I, I completely appreciate it, because I'm the same way. I just want to get things done. I think you have to respect the fact that you have to go through a public hearing process and then who knows what will happen there. Secondly, um, I think good decisions are made by having, you know, good information. Um, there's things that are in this proposal, albeit I think are, are, are good, but they need to get studied. I mean, we can argue that, yeah, you know, maybe, maybe Glen Lake School should be accessible for people on that. But as Sue pointed out, can that area sustain another twenty-five cars and the, you know, occupants? That needs to be studied. Will the school district allow, because we don't control that, will they allow, um, parking there? Maybe they don't want people on the school district property during the summer. I don't know. There's a whole host of things, but, um, this is not gonna get solved in, in a month.
And, uh, something this board can control and immediate is to, uh, direct the,
Keep it clean.
Direct our staff to keep it better cleaned than they have, than we have seen in the past. And then for them to document what that manload, man-hour load is. And then we have more data, as you said, to help make a decision. So.
I just wanted to point out that the way one board handled it in nineteen eighty-seven is they created the Glen Lake Committee.
Mm-hmm. I was just gonna say that.
And I wasn't here then, but it was, uh, Mike Massey, Richard Hoff, James Raymond, and Don Davidson were on the committee. Um, and they, their report is what led to an ordinance, the first ordinance with Glen Lake. They cite about the alcohol use down there. They cite, um, that the boat ramp and the swimming area, there was no designation between the two, so swimmers were in the dangerous boat loading area, which was addressed by conservation. But maybe a committee is the way to go to study this.
The thing that I want to, you know, keep on everybody's, it's my job to do this, is to let you know what our priorities are this year. And as much as I feel pretty strongly about this and having this, I also have to remind us that we've got four bargaining units, uh, negotiate. We have a lot to contend with. And a lot of issues that we're gonna deal with economically, um, in the town. Noble project, and I want to see things happen, but I'm not sure so much, how much attention we can give to it in the short term. So.
I, I was gonna, following, um, the town administrator's recommendation, suggest that we establish a committee and maybe have a member of this board, a member of the public, particularly maybe Mr. Karen, if he would be interested, uh, a member of Parks and Rec and a member of, um, PD and Public Works. And give them a deadline and give them a timeline that we would want some, some information, packet, options, um, by the middle of June or July.
I'm going to, I'm going to just amend yours or have a slight objection. Everyone is fine except the member of this board. Because we just have a lot to do. And I think we, we have appointed people on Parks and Rec, we have department heads. We have, we obviously, we have citizens who are passionate. This is, this is probably as good as a presentation you can get. Um, I think, I, I don't think we necessarily, we have just very limited resources. Um, so again, not just my opinion. I think it's a great thing. We should set up a committee, but let them know exactly what this board expects and then have them report back to us.
Maybe poll the board to see if there's someone willing to do that?
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, and there may be someone that's willing, but then when we talk about that, we talk about speed limits, we talk about this and that, and before you know it, then we're all stretched really thin. And, uh, and again, not to disparage this, but this is critical, but if this is, say, priority number ten on our list, we're just thinning out what's priorities number one, two, three, four, and five, because it's just that much less time that we have. Um, that's my only, you know, concern. And then two months from now, there'll be another one. And then there'll be another request. And that's what I think happens. And then we get, we get a lot of our goals kind of get diluted because of it.
Can I make a suggestion? Uh, we currently have an ordinance. And it's obvious by some of the photographs that were given to us tonight.
I'll be in follow-up.
Well, I guess there are issues there and there are issues as the town administrator pointed out back in nineteen eighty-seven, okay? What I would suggest is we have a current ordinance. Let me, uh, touch base with PD. And see if there's anything that we might be able to do to work within the current ordinance that we have to try to address some of these issues. In other words, perhaps they could take a look because, you know, they're the ones that issued the summonses for the parking. So they have a little bit of this history, some disinformation that we've been talking about. And let's just see if there's a possibility that we might be able to address some of these issues in the short term that hopefully won't take too many resources. And at least if some of these issues that are seem to be really the ones that are prominent and sticking out, we might be able to deal with this, with what we have in place.
Only one item that we, I, I agree that, you know, you can talk to PD, but there's only one item there that we have found didn't work. So we're not really following the ordinance. And that's on cash, the trash in, trash out, carry in, carry out area.
Oh, all, all totally alcohol.
That didn't work, so, right. Well, that's still in the ordinance, but what I'm saying is.
And addressing the parking, I mean, the, the parking to get an idea from them about the parking.
Right.
Because some of that information they might have the history of that, you know, that's been discussed here about the summonses that have been, you know, some of that history, just so that.
But the carry in, carry out can never work because we don't have someone monitoring it. That's why we have the trash.
Exactly. Alcohol, the same thing. Unless there's someone there all the time. I mean, the enforcement, I don't think they're.
Well, I, I, I.
We, we self-defeat the carry in, carry out by having the four trash barrels there.
All right.
I'd rather have the four trash barrels there.
Here's where I, I'd like to approach it with the board's consent is to proceed with having Selectman D'Avanza speak to the police, uh, department about, um, I guess ramping up, uh, enforcement or just monitoring of the area. The same token of how both DPW and Parks. uh, enforcement or just monitoring of the area, the same token of how both DPW and Parks and Recreation kinda maybe elevate the cleanup of the area.
And document.
And, and, and document it with the, with, we'll revisit this, it's, uh, April twelfth now, I don't think we're gonna get high volume, probably for another two months, I'd say. Um, let's.
And then how long it gets.
Right, but let's revisit this in two months, um, and then in terms of, I think we have to get that data collection piece going.
Well, is that included in this?
I think it would be, but I don't know if the data collection's gonna be, is gonna be valid in April and May, when really that, that area is not heavily used, it's used, but not heavily used. I think you wanna try to look at some of the more peak times, which I think is June, July, August. Um.
Is it so much the volume?
Now, that'll give us a little bit of time, that'll give us a little bit of time to, to talk to the, to the stakeholders, and I'm, I'm totally acceptable to having a, a committee, you know, together, but I think we first wanna talk to PD and the department heads about what are some of the issues that maybe we can fix some of this stuff. Speed limit, we can't, that's something that we're gonna have to deal with, um, if we lower that, um, you have any reservations?
Yeah, I mean, I, reviewing the ordinance and, and, I mean, it's obviously an enforcement issue.
Right.
And I don't think the police department is purposely not enforcing, I think they do the best they can with the manpower that they have. So in, since nineteen eighty-seven, two thousand and ten, the same issues have been here, so I don't, I don't really see what reviewing that information is gonna tell us.
Well, I think in fairness, that the waterfront as it is now is not the way that it was in nineteen eighty-seven.
Oh, it has improved.
It has improved dramatically thanks to the volunteer efforts there, so I think the problem is exacerbated simply because it's a nicer venue than it was back in eighty-seven. Um, but anytime that you ask for, I guess, a renewed focus on something, then I, it, it just creates more heightened awareness. What other approach would you like to go? I'm open-minded, I just, I just wanna see this.
I, I don't think reviewing the problem is gonna make the problem any different, go away, solve it. Um, I'm okay with gathering information to, for action, but I, I don't see what taking a month or so to just review the history of, of this will do.
I guess where I'm at is, I, I don't think that any type of data collection in April and May is gonna help us that much.
Agreed.
So I think it's June and July, so in, in the.
Or May and June.
Right, but in the meantime, Phil can talk to the police chief and say, okay, can we run plates on people who can run the plates?
The other thing too is the history of the, what the violations that they've issued last summer and possibly the summer before.
Yeah.
That could give us an idea of the data that you're talking about in July and August.
And for all we know, maybe they did do some studies already, I don't know.
They, they, they have, that's, that's where I was coming from.
There could be a, a small portion of people who are guests of our residents, and then they jointly bring, the resident brings his car, the guest brings his car, and they go visit the waterfront. So there's a small amount of that.
Okay.
Compared to.
Just wanna try to get a, a sense of, of where we're going, um, I, I'm sensing that there is a, uh, consensus to proceed with the collection of data. Probably in this, in the, in June, July, or August, um, since that's our busiest time, so we all, we're in agreement on that? Either nod your head yes or say no, I hate it, okay, is that nod, is that a?
I'd like to see that span of time show.
Okay, so give me a, a June.
May and June.
May and June, okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're good there? So, uh, data collection, May and June, is everybody okay with Phil talking to the police to try to get some, whatever background that there is in the meantime also, in terms of legality of running plates and doing all those things? Are we still okay with, um, having DPW and Parks and Rec just reinforcing with them the importance of keeping it clean and monitoring it? Because again, if they're only picking up the trash once a week and sometimes someone just drives by, I mean, I, I think that can't hurt to emphasize the cleanliness of it.
I just have a question on that point, if I can, there's a sign.
Yes.
That says, this is a carry in, carry out facility.
Yes.
Trash barrels have been removed from this area so that you will have a most pleasurable experience. Why do we have a trash barrel there?
So that sign should be removed.
So one or the other, either remove the sign or remove the trash barrel.
At, at one time it was determined by the board that the, uh, carry in, carry out was not working because we didn't have staff there to make sure it was working. It works in the state parks when you have someone there all day.
Okay, so does the board wish to remove the sign?
That part of the sign?
And can we do that?
Well, or you have to change the ordinance.
I gotta, well, I gotta see what the ordinance says.
Where, yes, where the signs reinforce the ordinance, and the, the ordinance says to say that we have to have a sign.
If you don't have a sign there, then people don't have the ordinance to follow and you have no way of any improvement.
See the ordinance?
The ordinance says that the Glen Lake Beach is designated as a carry in and carry out area, no littering, that's what it says, so it's the ordinance, if you then.
We have to implement the ordinance, that's our job, implement ordinances. Should we also research if we can, according to some state departments, restrict, uh, access through, we're not restricting access to the waterfront, but to the parking ability.
So the parking would be restricted to beach, uh, activities only?
That was, I mean, if all this surveying and data collection goes through how we think it's gonna go through, then, uh, one result could be parking.
Right, and I also think that.
And, and is that, would that be frowned upon by some state departments that helped in the funding or?
And this should.
Fishing wild game, because they recognize that that boat ramp is a legitimate state resource.
The other issue is this has to get passed along to the school district because it, it, it talks about using, uh, twenty-eight primary parking spaces at Glen Lake School, which we have no jurisdiction over, so.
There's also one other thing too, because I think when the, uh, when this was redone, didn't we get a grant?
We did.
Now, also that grant might have some restriction as far as whether we put any restrictions on non-residents too, I don't know, but that's a possibility.
It was a state grant.
There's also RSAs that talk about water bodies of certain size that have to have public access, okay. Once again, I just wanna just, we can, does this board, we can do all this, but it's, it's a use of resources and we can proceed, I just wanna make sure that we don't get all wrapped up in, in using all these resources, and then as, as Selectman Corney said, that we don't do anything, we put it off, I mean, if we're gonna go down this path, which I'm, I'm comfortable doing, let's set some deadlines, let's get some answers, and let's make some decisions where we're gonna, where we're gonna, where we're gonna proceed, I, I don't want this to be all for naught.
And just one last clarification before we go all the way down that road, if I'm reading this correctly, it says eighteen parking spaces. I mean, our community has eighteen parking spaces at our public beach.
Right, you have seven at your public library, so.
Okay, no, no, I'm just saying.
You had.
Our public, our public beach has eighteen parking spaces, I, 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 it's too bad we went for this grant, but I just wanna make sure I, that we know what, uh, what the public is.
And that, that's all they thought the shoreline, and because it's such a narrow shoreline.
No, no, I, no, I understand it, but saying, open to the public, meaning.
That's what, that's what Selectman Pierce said, he wants to know, is it open to the Goffstown public or, or the public?
That might just, that could just might take care of everything.
Yes.
I, I'm just gonna restate, I, I think if we establish a committee, give them all of this to do, all of the investigation, it'll take the workload off the staff. If a board of Selectmen member has the time and wants to do it on their own, that's up to them, if not, they can operate on their own. Give them a date to come back to us and lay out all of the, the information that we raised questions about.
I just don't see how it's gonna take the workload off the staff, because that committee is gonna be constantly looking, questions to staff to answer, and research, and wanting to know about the, the grants, the history of RSAs.
We've already, we've already created more work right here.
Yeah.
I'm already overloaded, thank you. I didn't look, I, I. I think the first question we have to ask ourselves is, do you wanna proceed with addressing some of these issues, knowing that there's gonna be resources? Does that seem to be a general consensus or no? We wanna let it.
Well, I, I guess, am I going to be discussing this with PD?
I, I'm just, I'm, all I'm trying to stress is that, what you just said, these require time commitments from whether it be volunteers, staff, et cetera, and, and they, and they definitely do. And if we're going, I just wanna be mindful of everything that we have, we talked about our goals in a workshop, we talked about it the week, you know, last week, that's what we set as our goal, now this becomes something that, and we gotta deal with, um, or we don't have to deal with. We, it depends upon the scope of how we deal with it, um, and that's all I'm saying, is that these things are man hours.
Make a suggestion to move this along, we authorize Selectman Devanza to speak with the police department and get the history, and give us a report next week. And in the meantime, the rest of the board, think about this till next week, we put it on our agenda and come up with an action plan.
Can I get one other clarification? You know what I'm going to say, what is the public?
Yeah, I got it.
Cause that might just cure, that might just take care of all, all the, we're looking to do.
What is the public? What does the public access mean, general public or Goffstown public?
Yeah, if it's Goffstown, if it's Goffstown public access, I think it, it resolves a lot of problems, a lot of questions.
You log on to a, a fishing, what's it?
Game.
Fishing game website, they list all, uh, boat ramps in the whole state, there's Goffstown, Glen Lake.
So that's why we have all non-residents here.
Well, Marine Patrol does.
No, I know.
All right.
Control the boat ramp.
Go on next week's agenda, Selectman Devanza will speak with the police department, and, um, Sue has some questions that we have, and we'll take it from there. It's all Sue's fault because she said that we had a light agenda tonight and that we'd be on here early. Thank you.
May you poof her.
Um, town administrator's report.
Okay, you have one committee meeting this week, um, Wednesday at seven, Solid Waste Commission, and us at DPW.
I'll take care of that one.
Okay, consensus folder tonight is AP warrants, employee status report, proclamation, uh, for keep Goffstown beautiful week, and that will be, um, presented next week.
Do we need a committee for that one?
There we go.
There's an assignment.
Starting over there, will that proclamation be given at Glen Lake?
And poll licenses, number one fifty-four nine oh one two at Mass Road and number thirty-eight ninety PB at East Dunbar.
Do I have a motion to accept the consensus folder?
No, no.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, Selectman Campasano seconded it, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you, the assessor has recommendations this evening for elderly exemptions, map six, lot seventeen B dash one twenty-one, veterans tax credits, map six, seventeen B dash thirty-seven, map thirty-two, lot twelve, map sixteen, lot forty-six, and a blind exemption, map seventeen, lot forty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectman Pierce, all those in favor say aye.
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 Five zero.
Thank you, and Chief Sullivan requests the board's authorization to apply for the annual highway safety grant for DPWI patrols in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion authorized the chief to apply for the highway safety grant.
Seconded, seconded by Selectman Campasano, any questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, five zero.
Okay.
All right, uh, let's go to, uh, we'll skip to committee reports, historic district commission.
They met last week, I swore in, uh, our new pro, uh, well, our, uh, Mark Collins from, uh, to a full member from, uh, well, as in a, a alternate. And our new planner, Brian Rose, uh, was introduced to the commission, uh, by Derek and myself, mostly by Derek, uh, who was well received. And, uh, commissioned attended to, uh, a little bit of business, uh, such as discussing the, uh, the Duncan Donus proposal over on, uh, South Mast, um, there was a little bit of review on that, uh, and they, um, letter of intent was sent to, uh, the division for a CR twenty-ten CLG grant, uh, Rasmia Town Hall and Eldship, there was discussion about the, uh, plastering and, and stenciling on there, uh, trying to, uh, uh, work with the division, they wanted a little bit more, uh, input on the, uh, on the stenciling. They're leaning towards restoration rather than, uh, the, the replacement, so, uh, that we've, uh, been looking at, a couple of preservation plasterers have been in, and, uh, there's also since that point, uh, Elizabeth met with one, uh, stenciler, uh, also discussed, uh, H, uh, merchandise for town events, uh, also, uh, for the, in conjunction with the two hundred and fiftieth on it, so I think there'll, there'll be a report to the two hundred and fiftieth, uh, on that. And that was pretty much the HDC.
Uh, next is planning board.
Uh, planning board did meet last week, and our new planner was in attendance, uh, Brian Rose. Uh, who I have to say, for his first meeting at the planning board and, uh, uh, you know, being from, uh, Arizona, coming here, the little difference between the two communities, uh, he did, he did quite well, he did excellent as a matter of fact, he would know, have known that it was his first planning board meeting. So I have to, uh, I have to, I have to do, say that, uh, we had a couple of public hea-, uh, we did, uh, we did have a, uh, wait a minute, this is EBA, I'm sorry. The, uh, there were a couple of, of, uh, public hearings that we had, and, uh, we had the, um, project that was up where the Hill Road, uh, come in, and, uh, we gave them, uh, we granted them a time extension, uh, for ninety days. Uh, also the, uh, Lally property again, um, came up, uh, that was presented by, uh, Robert Todd, surveyor, uh, in New Boston for the applicant, and, uh, they, uh, that was continued for, uh, further public hearings in May, and, uh, we did a, uh, other, uh, discussions on some, uh, forestry management plan for the Anacain, uh, trust property, that's over on Shril Hill Road and Kennedy Hill Road. Uh, we have, uh, that, that'll be coming back to the board for further, uh, discussion and approval. That was, uh, basically the, we don't know what that night, it was a long meeting though, a lot of discussion on those.
All right. Any other committees that may have met that we missed? All right, let's go to old business, and that's the road program.
Still have new business coming, right?
Oh yeah, new business after old.
Maybe we can do the most first, and then.
When the new business comes after the road, it's no longer new business than it's old business.
It's kinda a mixture of old and new.
Yeah.
He's, he's chair.
It's new old business.
Selectman Pierce, you have the, you have the floor.
Uh, maybe this is a question to Sue or the chair, um, you brought up Brian Rose, and, uh, his predecessor served as the chair of the Gulfstown Rail Trail Development Committee, should this board in, endorse him to that capacity?
He, he would take over Steve's position there.
So it says automatic takeover then, okay, I just wanna, I just wanna make that public in case it was sensitive to some of you.
Did you have any other new business?
I, yes, I did, thank you. Um, in your packet, uh, was a, a proposal to, uh, reexamine on the road plan what our guidance was to, uh, DPW concerning Moet, and, um, I know our minutes we approved earlier, uh, simply said, add Moet to the road plan. Yet I know, uh, Carl left here with notes that said shim Moet, and, um, I've spent an hour and a half with the, uh, DPW staff, um, looking at, uh, very economical alternatives to, uh, do something different other than shimming, and, uh, and to the extent that we have worked up some cost estimates, Carl today requested that we not discuss this in detail and simply wait for him to be here next week, and I agree with that. Just, uh, letting you know why you, why you have that in your packet.
All right, if any, if any board members have any, uh, questions between now and next Monday, if you could, if you could get in touch with Selectman Pierce or Carl
Sure.
with respect to Moet, okay, this way we have the questions and we speed things up. It's always interesting having a civil engineer on staff. It's always interesting having a civil engineer on staff. I mean, on our board. You know what I'm talking about. Okay, now we have, uh, old business and this has to do with the road program. And again, we're gonna try to hold off on a lot of things because Carl was, he had, uh, uh, an issue that he had, he had to deal with unexpectedly.
Correct.
So he won't, he won't be able to make it tonight, but we can address this next week, but this is like a precursor to that.
Right, I just wanted to give it to the board and then we can either generate questions tonight for Carl or during the week.
Super. Um, if you wouldn't mind, uh, since this is the first that I think everyone has seen of this, if you could just kinda go over what some of your questions are.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just break it down. The first page is the road plan, the draft road plan that we received, um, a week ago. And you notice in the upper left-hand corner, um, following paving bid price, there's a layout of all of this year's money, starting with the paving budget, reclamation budget, encumbered money, drainage, sidewalk, crack ceiling, and then a total. All of, other than encumbered, all of the other items you will also find on the two thousand and ten appropriations. Those numbers match, um, dollar and cent. In fact, I have, um, the second page. If you turn, you'll see a comparison, two thousand and ten appropriations, two thousand and ten road plan. So the numbers on the right came right off of this road plan that we were given, and the numbers on the left are the account numbers. Um, so you can see, basically, they're identical. The, um, the road plan then, going back to page one, lays out the cost per square yard or linear foot. And then there's a list of all of the, other than the GPS equipment and the traffic lights, a list of all of the planned work this year. Sidewalk repairs, reclamation, crack ceiling, and then there's a grand total, and then a budget remaining, thirty-six thousand five hundred. The third page is basically, um, again, it's just an Excel spreadsheet, so they number automatically. The, uh, two thousand and ten road plan as presented, those are all of the same items that were on Carl's.
And if I, if I could just enter it for one second, this first page, eight A, is just what we got.
What we received.
Not any action that we took, because we did take some action to redo some of these.
Correct. Correct. Um, and again, the total there, so, and the third page, sidewalks, reclamation. So this was just an Excel spreadsheet that I put together utilizing the numbers that were given to us on the road plan, and they all match. And that was just more of a math check, um, for you. Starting on the fourth page, the one difference there is the encumbered money. You'll see under the two thousand and ten.
Okay, got it.
There's encumbered money, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. The very last page of your packet.
Wait, 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 back a minute. On page four, you're saying?
Correct.
Page five of this.
I'm sorry, page five. I apologize.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm looking at four.
I should've numbered them. It would've been easier.
Can you go over that again then?
Sure. Page five, same as you saw on page two, but now under two thousand and ten appropriation, uh, there is included a figure for encumbered. And you'll notice it's a four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar difference, um, from the encumbered that we received on the road plan. The very last page of this packet is the encumbrance list that we voted on December twenty-first.
And that's where you got your seven eighty-five?
Correct. It just includes Continental paving. There's two POs, resurfacing and reclamation. John Neville, Page Hill Road. Tebow Corporation Shirley Hill Road, and those two are for the wear course that normally get put on the year after. There's also a, uh, forty thousand dollar sidewalk repairs up underneath Delory Construction. And then RH White reclaim base pavement for three areas.
What page, what page?
Very last.
Very last.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
So there were two lines for Continental, one for John Neville, one for Tebow. What else did you have?
RH White.
Yep.
RH White.
Reclaim and base pavement for three areas. And it looks like Delory Construction sidewalk repairs.
No, RH White, was that part of the road plan or part of the era?
I, I, I don't know.
It had to be road plan, cause RH White for Manchester Waterworks would've been Ara.
Uh, Sue and I went through the two thousand and nine road resurfacing bid, um, the award bid for Continental paving, and Chetel, Sunny, and Russell wear course, Pershing Street, Ridge Street, Lorraine Street, Fairview Street, Saunders Road. Those are on this year's and maybe part of that.
Last year's encumbrance.
Last year's encumbrance. I guess my point with all of this, if you, I came out with a balance of a hundred and seventy-two thousand. That may or may not be entirely accurate depending on what projects. The point I'm, I'm making and the question that I'm raising is, I would like to see a road plan spreadsheet like this that lists every dollar that has been encumbered, every project that's gonna be done this year, even if it's a holdover from last year. So that when we look at the projects that are being done and we look at the balance remaining, it's a true balance. We know exactly what dollars were, are being spent this construction season. So that's what I would request is that we redo this.
Let me just, for the sake of, of clarity here. Let's use a road that was done last year, but wasn't picked, picked one. Let's go Chetel.
Page Street, uh, pay, uh, pay.
Page Hill.
Page Hill and Shirley, excuse me, Page Hill.
Okay.
And Shirley Hill.
And Shirley Hill. They, their wear course.
So you're, you're saying that two thousand and nine Page Hill, I'm just gonna use, what did that, what did the total cost, what was the total cost of that one?
It's a hundred and one thousand, uh.
Total cost?
A hundred and one.
Hundred and one thousand encumbered, but the to, the total cost was, I guess where I'm driving at is there needs to be a spreadsheet that says that on one line, what is the total cost of this project, Page Hill Road? Hypothetically, I'm using hypothetical numbers here. Three hundred thousand dollars.
That was already spent.
But, but just, but just hear me out. I'm gonna use, these numbers are not real, folks, okay?
Right.
These are not real numbers. Page Hill project, three hundred thousand dollars. That was approved in oh nine. We only spent two hundred thousand dollars, okay? Then what you're trying to say is in the, and what is left over, encumbered, there should be another column. One hundred thousand dollars was encumbered for that, and the road work is being done.
But we have that, that's what this sheet is.
Right, but I'm saying it's all over the board.
He wants it in easy form.
It needs to be in an easy format, because now you gotta go and hunt and pack as to what, where is this? Why does that get encumbered? And it's on fifteen, it's in five different sheets. Whereas if you had a project, and these projects don't go beyond two years typically, um, you would know from year to year what was spent, what was encumbered, you know, what's left over, because in many respects, you're saying that this money, although encumbered, is, is it being double counted or?
Right, but I get, if, if you can do it all in one sheet. If you list, if, if instead of saying three hundred and fifty thousand for encumbered, you list the true seven hundred thousand that we have for road projects that we encumbered, and then instead of, like, if you look down at the paving on this year's road plan, where is Page Hill and Shirley Hill wear course? That's gonna be done this year.
Right.
But it's not listed on here, and that would be an expense. That would reduce that encumbered amount, because it's not free money for us to use.
This, a one-page list is wonderful. I mean, it, it could've been a line right in here with an asterisk in front of it. Page Hill, so much money, you know, one hundred and one thousand. And the asterisk up here would say that was using money encumbered from the previous year. And so we would have one list of all the roads that are being worked on.
Okay, so the, the primary issue here is that our encumbered money that's listed on the ten, two thousand and ten road program is listed here as three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but in actuality, you're saying that it's seven hundred, based upon the list from December.
It's the money we, we encumbered.
Twenty-first, it's more.
Seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in road money.
And now all we have to know from Carl is, is that, is the seven hundred and twenty, I'm sorry, the number that you had given from December twenty-first.
Seven eighty-five.
What is the road program? What is perhaps Ara or other, other funds?
And he probably did not include the encumbrance for Shirley and Page Hill, cause they're not listed down here, so he didn't include it up above. But basically, it's making sure it adds up and you show all the projects.
Correct.
Right, so basically, what, what will probably happen there is if that number was revised to seven hundred and something thousand, then you would see the Shirley and the other one on there.
Which is, which is what I did.
And it all balanced out.
No.
But it doesn't balance out.
No, because I did that. I put the encumbered money, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, and then in the road plan, I added reclaim and base pavement, three areas, as an expense. I added Page Hill Road, a hundred and one thousand as an expense. I added Shirley Hill, a hundred and forty-three thousand as an expense, and we still have
Hundred and seven thousand.
A hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar balance. That's my point.
I'd like to see this, yes, Chairman wrote it, and I agree with his thing. I'd like to see it laid out, what are the costs of new roads, what are the costs of those, how much was expended?
I, I think he's got, I think he knows what, what it'll look like for.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other new business? All right, just a couple of things. Um, I just wanna go back to our, I wanna start to put some, some timelines on some things with the board's permission. Um, Sue, we have a calendar in the other room, and Sue started to put down when our, our meeting times are for our collective bargaining, and those are on the calendar. Um, it's gonna be my assumption that the liaison for that department is gonna be the one who is active with the negotiation for that particular, um, uh, bargaining unit. The big question is, uh, and again, I, I, I've only done one of these things, but historically, do we have legal representation on all of these or no?
I would suggest that's a discussion under strategies for a non-meeting.
Okay, all right. Um, the other issue is in preparation for our negotiations, there, there is, Sue, you, you sent us a, a dr, uh, an email that there is a workshop, uh, on five twenty-five, two thousand and ten for any board member too, if they wanted to attend. So if you do wanna go to that workshop, then let Sue know.
You can sign up right online at LGC.
Goes up quick supposedly, so.
This is, uh, they don't offer this every year.
Okay.
It's, it's in this issue with the bridge on the front.
Right.
Page twenty-two, collective bargaining.
Okay.
One oh one.
And Steve, if you wouldn't mind, I know you're working on the HR ad hoc committee, if you, if there are any milestone dates, if you can put them on the calendar when you might report out to us when your first meetings are, just to, you know, report us out on that.
What, what committee was it?
HR.
HR ad hoc.
Okay.
Um, performance reviews, I just, I sent an email with the, uh, town administrator and the department head. Um, so this is our, all of our jobs to work with our, uh, department heads to kinda tweak this. I was looking at a June first deadline for that, so if you can meet with the department heads and kinda tweak those forms and, and kinda come back with any, uh, changes that either you or the department head have worked out. Um, I noticed on the calendar that Sue put some dates in with regard to our website. And we talked about an executive summary, and this is one where, what, Sue, can you give me a timeframe which you think you can give folks a template? So we can start this thing. You need a month or two or?
For every committee.
Every committee, yeah.
Yeah, I can get something out to them by the end of the month.
Okay, so, how about we'll give you till mid-May? Is that fair?
Okay.
Okay.
Twelve, nineteenth?
I'd like to get it, um, get what we can up and formatted, because when he's doing the website, he's gonna migrate all the data on it. So it'll be set up and we'll have a placeholder in the new website for it.
Okay.
Did you foresee that going onto committees? And, you know, where you have committees and you have minutes, and you'd also have executive summary there as well, so, okay.
Yeah. All right. Um, we talked about, uh, hosting meetings with the committee chairs to discuss common concerns. And, and I think a good point that was made was they're good when they're, it's specific to a particular topic, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, my thought was to host one and the topic would be communication. How do we communicate better amongst ourselves and how do we communicate better with the public? That's what I think that this thing, that this one should, should, uh, should, should be the focus of, is everyone okay with that being a topic? To get the first meeting off the ground?
Yeah.
Um, and I will work with Sue and try to have that, again, I don't think there's a, I'd like to see maybe us do that in around June time.
The reasoning could you just say?
I'm just trying to.
Just spacing is, uh.
What, yeah, I'm trying to space things out. Uh, talked about getting a monthly column in the Goffstown News. So I wanna, first, is there anyone itching to, to write one on the Board of Selectmen? No one wants to write. Okay, I will work with Sue on getting the, you know, getting this thing going. I was thinking about, I, I just wanted the time right now to do it, but one of the things that I wanna try to do is to try to explain, um, maybe how, you know, our whole tax situation and, you know. But I'll work with you, Sue, on, on that one. I'm gonna wait till the summer to talk about the television, so that'll be a summer activity, and.
Television?
Yeah, TV, GTV show.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I don't mind hosting that. And we'll talk more about surveys. Uh, if, if we could, Sue, if you can put this on your to-do list in terms of, can we, what can we do electronically with surveys, and then the same thing, we talked about newsletters, if you remember, maybe trying to attach it to a newsletter or, um, so if we can report back to us in a couple of weeks on that one. We, yeah.
You might also wanna investigate a hybrid, um, where you could, cause I know we talked about the surveys online and then the targeted mailing.
Right.
Um, what you can do is an electronic survey online, but use a postcard with the address so that you're, and then mail those to selected areas, so that you're only getting people you target, but the actual work of the survey is being done electronically and the analysis.
Is it, is it, when do we send tax bills out?
I think by the end of May.
Is it possible for us to send out a survey? Who do, who prepares putting everything in envelopes?
The prisoners.
The prisoners. Is it possible to put a?
Old stuff and sealed.
Is it possible to do what you said, and this way, would we incur any additional postage? Because then that's a, it's a golden opportunity. We're already doing a mailing.
You, um, there's an RSA that governs that.
Right.
Um, as long as it's not, nothing political, and as long as there's a vote of the governing body to do and insert in the tax bill, it's allowable. It has to be about town business, you know, and related to town.
Just not quite sure about a survey when my tax bill comes in.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Maybe not the time I wanted to.
Maybe that is the time to do it.
Maybe it is the time.
I, I don't, you're right, but I mean.
Well, that, it may skew, yeah, it may skew your.
It may skew. You want it to be objective. It could be skewing. It could be.
Yeah. Definitely.
Well, here's the other thing, is that this particular tax bill will, will not, no, will not be, because this is not the one where it's taking effect, the increase.
First one, right.
This one coming up in June.
And I really.
It will in, in next December.
But I mean, I, I think, I just think in general, you know.
Yeah, but I think this is, this is, you have a captive audience. It's their tax bill. They're opening this thing up. I mean, I don't know, I just, and if we're gonna do it, we have to get cracking on it now, because you have to prepare your survey questions, um.
What are you looking to survey?
We can pick a department, we can pick level, you know, uh, service, what type of service are we providing?
Did I share with you the ICMA National Survey, uh, and you pick and choose the departments that you?
No.
Yeah, I'll get that too.
But maybe that's.
It's necessary to have them do it, though. It's, um.
I know, but it'll be ni, I mean, is there any?
They give you regional, though, comparisons, national comparisons.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I, I, I think, keep it simple. Uh, maybe it's one particular department.
Right, and you can pick and choose from that.
Maybe it's ten, it's one department, maybe it's ten questions, same questions go on the internet. Um, and we just kinda capture it that way. Is there any department that's itching? Now, we know police does one, so is there any other?
You should ask us, which one wants to go out with the tax bill?
Right. The fire department.
Which department?
I think it should be a major department, whether it be admin, uh, fire.
Maybe start with us.
On the backside of this card, we'll pitch over your tower truck.
Maybe we start with us.
He's right, you know.
Board of Selectmen.
He's right.
Or maybe it's a, maybe it's a question about communications. How do you want us to communicate with you?
Oh, how we're doing.
Yeah.
Nick is right, and we've been talking about this, we've been talking with different departments. We should be the first ones out there saying, do you think you're getting representation? Do you think things are going in the right direction? He's absolutely correct.
We talk about, you know, doing, uh,
We talk about, you know, doing, uh, evaluations on department heads, and maybe we need to.
I know, I know the voting time is our evaluation.
I'm fine.
True, but it might not be bad to just have a snapshot.
I'm fine with that.
I agree with that totally.
Okay, let's do it. Does anybody wanna talk, you know, work, work on some questions?
I don't think we should be the ones preparing the questions.
I think you do, I think you have to, why not? Who's gonna prepare the question?
I would be that.
Self-critical analysis.
Why her?
She go, I'm, I'm sure if she goes into the, I, she said ICMA, there must be something, but I don't think we should be loading or directing the questions, I think it should be.
If any of our viewers have questions, they can send them in to the town administrator.
Right.
Keep her under a hundred.
But that's a good point, I really like that, because if we're gonna, we're taking a leadership position, if we're gonna send along the tax bill, it should be, you know, how the community thinks, you know, we're doing, and overall, and I think that's not a bad thing to do.
But there's, there's one thing to keep in mind on that, and along with those questions, there are several things that are on that bill that we have absolutely no control over, we only have control over one of the three items that make up the tax bill. So, s- that might also have an impact on the response that you get. Because when you say, how are we doing with this, and somebody's upset, let's say, with the county.
Well, I think it's, well, that's, yeah.
If the, if somehow the questions were non-financial in, in their immediate effect, if, you know, if the questions were purely financial, like, should we buy more dump trucks? You know, that's perhaps not a good question to ask, but, uh.
Steve, going back to what you're saying, but part of a survey is perception, and that it's, it's, it's not, it's, when that survey goes out, and you might say, well, geez, we only have effect on certain pieces, but if the perception is we do, we need to know.
Maybe it's a communication.
It's, to me, I, I agree with you a whole hundred percent, because, I mean, the conversations that I've had with the residents is that they will say, oh my gosh, I can't believe the taxes are gonna be going up, you know, X amount, and whether or not it's a reflection upon the, this board, or whether it's the school board, or the county, or the state ed piece, it's going, and most people, they look to the Board of Selectmen. They, they do, doesn't matter, um, because that's just the way it goes, so, um.
Well, I, I guess I'm just bringing that up, because the way that you get a response to a question, when you say, how are we doing? A person might be responding to one of the two other entities.
All right, I, I think, let's, let's just go on this path, I'll get to you in a second. There's, is there, is it safe to say that we're interested in doing something to send out the tax bill to optimize our mailing, you know, our, our mailing power here? Because we're already sending out the bills. And we can work on doing something in conjunction with the revi- revised website, to do a survey application where we don't have to actually tabulate one, like we did with the parks and rec one, where a lot of that was kinda tabulated, um, by the survey instrument itself. It's a matter of what questions that we're going to ask, whether they be, you know, we can have, you know, we can do this as an overall, where, you know, um, you can ask them specific questions as to services, the board, um, you can do.
Should we charge fees for use of a park?
Yeah.
My suggestion was gonna be, if we, if we all came up with several question topics, and then maybe the police chief could send those to the professor at St. Ansem, who may, and we could ask if he would be willing to give us ten valid survey questions. Because their classes, they do that for the police department, they know how to word survey questions, so that they're valid.
Okay.
You better get hopping, because they're, they're ending up their term, so, they usually do this as a class project.
Well, not to do the survey, just to, just to come up, just to word the questions.
What I think I heard you say was, each of us could give Sue two questions.
Two, three questions, yeah.
Or if anyone wants to send in questions.
All right, so you got, you got till next month?
Questions or topics?
Question, topics.
Because, um, the professor will format it to be a valid question, but if you want, let me know what you wanna measure.
And you have the ICMA questions, and, so, you send your specifics to Sue, um, by, by the end of this week. Let's get cracking on this. Next is the management of large projects, and since we're starting the drainage project now, and, and for those of you who went through the traffic, expect this to be, I don't know how bad it's gonna be over the next few weeks, but, um, the traffic is going to be an issue, I think, you know, this summer, with regard to a lot of projects on our busy arteries, you know, Mast Road, uh, here, and also down in the Pinnardville section, as they deal with the sewer project.
Plus the bridge?
Um, yeah, the, the Byron Bridge, so.
As a suggestion, once Carl comes out with a spreadsheet that, for the road plan, if we take the projects section and create an extended spreadsheet that basically has next to each project.
When?
Start, yes or no?
Yeah.
Percentage completed, and then estimated cost and current cost. And then, at the end of each month, that gets completed, and we would have a snapshot, maybe even a comments section if there's any issues.
You got all that?
And, and it would be the same.
Compensate, I like.
Target dates.
What I would be doing tomorrow.
I can think of no other, no better person than Selectman Pierce to tag a list.
Selectman Pierce, if we could put target start dates and target dates, they'll get it.
All right.
And that's every project.
It just folds out, so we would just.
Everything else is on that calendar, so we're, we're good. Uh, just wanted to let the board know, next week, I will be a little bit late, I am chaperoning a field trip. Um, and I think I get back at six thirty, so, um, yeah, how'd you know?
That's where, that's where they're going this year.
Yeah. And the other issue is that in the following two weeks, I'm away on business, so I wanted to know if any other selectmen is away, um, because sometimes there's two of us away, and not a whole lot of things happen, and then maybe we decide to postpone a meeting, or, uh, a leave, you know, not have one.
I'm relatively new, so I'm not going to be away on Mondays yet, so.
And I'm done with school, so.
You're done with school, okay, so everyone is good for the next, uh, because for me, I wrote the dates down.
I'll be here Mondays.
Um, it was the, for me, it's the twenty-sixth and then the third. And then I'm good after that, I don't have anything. All right, so, uh, Phil?
As far as I know, I'm not in Philly.
That's where I'm going.
Are you?
Yes, I am.
Go check out in the tenants' hall.
All right, um, for one of them.
That'd be an honor, if you could get that.
Yeah. All right, uh, the other thing.
All the details, I can show you all the entrances.
Does the board, last summer, the board, uh, we, I think there was a two-month period where we was, we alternated every week, every other week, uh.
Can I?
I don't know if we can do it this year.
Permission to speak? I was gonna say, I, I would, if we're looking at a schedule like we just talked about, I would say, can't afford to do it every other week.
Yeah.
Do what every other?
Meet every other week like last year.
Last, last year, we, we met every other week during the su- during July and August, and I don't know if we have that luxury.
I would say no.
So, I think what we can do is, we can talk, do the same thing I just did right now, is there a situation where two people might have a same planned vacation or something, and then we'll just, we won't have that particular meeting, but on that, I think it's just full speed ahead. Because when two people are out, like when you and I were both, was it you and I? Yeah, we're out, um, you know, there's only so much you can do. Yep.
Maybe those are, if we, if we know in advance when two or more, or when two selectmen are gonna be out, Sue can arrange the agenda to get all the housekeeping type things out, so that frees up the time we do have for.
So if you would, if you do have any planned vacations that are, that are during the summertime, if you could just let Sue or myself know, and then we'll just keep that on a calendar, so we are as productive as we can be.
Usually take out off the fourth of July week, do you want to take that off?
Right, yeah, no.
No way.
No?
No.
Wow. Got the least Memorial Day this year, sat on a Monday.
Uh, Memorial Day.
Usually is on a Monday.
Yeah, it is.
Be nice, be nice.
The twenty-fourth.
The fourth is a floater.
Is it twenty-fourth?
No, it's late in that.
The thirty-first?
I think so. All the heart of our holiday schedules.
The thirty-first, it's, uh, yeah, May thirty-first is Memorial Day.
So that's, that's another day off.
So we meet on Tuesday that week?
I'm on vacation.
Well, that's an important question to add, you know, we need to resolve.
I'm not qualified with.
We'll meet on, on that Tuesday, then? So we will, in lieu of the thirty-first, we'll meet on, uh, Tuesday, June first.
Yeah.
Anybody got that?
I'm on.
And, uh, July
That's okay.
fifth is actually technically the holiday.
Right.
And on that one, we just will not meet. We'll take off that week.
That week off, okay.
So not meet on what?
On the week of July fifth. All right, any other? Any other business? I'm not hearing any.
We have non-public.
Do we have any non-public?
Oh, yeah, next week you will.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Who was the first, please, Phil?
Selectman, uh, Phil.
He's fast.
He's very, Selectman Phil.
I missed it.
He's very fast. Um, all those in favor of adjourned?
Hi, hi.
That was him.